Is that as difficult as it is for the community and for everybody to just exercise as much patience and grace as possible because it's never a difficult decision, I think, for the board or district leadership to make a decision that errs on the side of caution if it means providing greater safety and protection for our children. That's never ever a difficult decision to make. That being said, we know the amount of time and resources that have gone into creating this hybrid model in part because we engaged the community so much in this decision that we decided to offer both because we knew that the community was split. So to have to pivot and fully go remote was certainly not a part of the plan, given all that the district has gone through to try and make this happen as smoothly as possible. So this week, you know, it may not be tomorrow when those students who were going hybrid get final notification, right? The board members all probably made very different decisions based on what was best for their child and in their family. My little one, my littlest one was going hybrid. I do not have any clue now how, you know, switching to fully remote will impact him. And I may not get that information tomorrow, but I know I will get it by Monday. So as difficult as it is for people to try and be a little bit extra patient, I think, with teachers and administration, you know, I think would be greatly appreciated. Last week, I think, was a challenging week a little bit. I think, you know, teachers were certainly very pumped. Certainly hear all the chatter that's happening, you know, on Facebook and social media in the community. And, you know, we are all, as Christina said earlier this year, these are, you know, unprecedented times, right? This is nothing we're doing is a normal course of action for any school district. So just, you know, I'm just asking for people to just exercise a little bit extra patience as we try and get the school year up and running and put our energy into making sure we celebrate, you know, next Monday with, you know, with all of that energy that we've been putting into with some of the unfavorable comments that I have seen. Sorry. So I just want to say thank you for all of the teachers and administrators who had to pivot within these past 48 hours and switch. But, you know, we will offer a hybrid model, obviously, whenever we feel like we safely can do that.
Definitely.
So I think with that, if there are no other comments, I'm sure if there's more to discuss, we certainly will do that. But we will keep moving on the agenda. And we have a couple of action items. The first one are our monthly bills. The bills for the month of August were reviewed by Mr. Lanier. Mr. Lanier, take it away.
Yes, I have reviewed the bills for the month of August and gone through them. And at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the bill for $4,000... Oh, I'm sorry.
Second. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Greggs.
Yes.
Pareto.
Yes.
Fleetstra.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Lanier.
Yes.
Blackman.
Horace.
Yes, and the motion has passed. Next item is the payroll. May I have a motion, please, to approve payroll for the month of July in the amount of $388,428.05?
No moves.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Is this...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Is this the one on personnel or payroll?
Payroll.
Yeah. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Pareto.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Greggs.
Yes.
Blackman.
Yes.
Lanier.
Yes.
Fleetstra.
Yes.
Horace.
Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the personnel report as presented?
No moves.
Second.
And I'm guessing there is a question, David?
Yes. So my question is this, and I give this question also as a lead-in to a much bigger question later on. And I don't also foresee it coming out much in budget discussion. But I'm really wanting to know more about our approval of the paraprofessionals, especially in light of what we're doing with the remote. And so I'm going to approve this particular issue at this point in time, but I guess I'm putting my asterisk in it for future considerations by the superintendent and administration for us to consider.
What do you want us to consider?
So it's more that, I guess, I want us to look at, are we... Do we have too many? Do we have enough paraprofessionals as we look to deal with the FTEs as people are reassigned, reshuffled, or reexamined?
September 14.
All right.
But definitely.
That's it for me.
Okay. Great.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mute was on.
Oh, that's okay.
Thanks, David. Roll call, please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Blackman.
Yeah.
Fleetstra.
Yes.
Lanier.
Yes.
Greggs.
Yes.
Pareto.
Yes.
Horace.
Yes, and the motion has passed. We now have several discussion items. And I just want to mention to everyone on the call that there are no discussion items. I think this might be the first time in quite a while that actually discusses the reopening. So I just want to make sure if there are outstanding questions or additional concerns that have popped up as you've been listening in and we are not addressing them later in this call, please feel free to shoot Dr. Smith an email and actually maybe even do it now if it's fresh on your mind. But it's not on the agenda. You're on mute, Dana.
Oh, sorry. Yes, that's perfect. Dsmith@sd161.org. If anyone has any pertinent questions, feel free to send them.
Okay, so the first discussion item is the budget.
Everyone's been waiting for that, so very happy to welcome Fran. I know she's been working very hard on the budget and she has a presentation ready, lots of great charts that will simplify and help us have a good conversation. Fran?
Okay, let me see. Let me share my screen then. All right, do we see that?
Perfectly.
All right, good. Okay, well, welcome, everybody. This is very weird for me. I'm used to being able to interact with you all, and that's not going to be able to really happen as well tonight. So if you have questions, please kind of jump in. It's going to be awfully difficult for me to see faces and see where you're at. So just for members, please jump in if you have questions. All right. Okay, so once again, we'll start with what is our budget? The budget's a roadmap. So again, it's not actuals. It is what our plan is. It's what we expect our revenues to be when they come in. It's what we expect our expenses to be as they go out. The budget is really just, it's built on assumptions. It's on what we think is going to happen. It's me pulling out my little crystal ball based on experience and based on history and based on what we've been reading and seeing and feeling and kind of coming up with an idea of where we're going to go. This year, I will say that this is probably the most difficult time to make an assumption ever, but we did our best and this is kind of what we're presenting to you. Again, not actuals. So on the revenue side, we have three basic areas. You've got your local sources, which of course the largest is our property taxes and small amount of fees, because remember, we got rid of a lot of the student fees. On the state side, you have your evidence-based funding model and your mandated categoricals as well as a few grants. And on the federal side, we have some more grants. We, for this fiscal year, you are going to receive the second half of the 2019 levy. So those are the bills that just came for August, which have kind of actually been pushed until October. We'll talk a little bit about that collection cycle in a second. And then it's also the first half of the 2020 levy. Now, 2020 levy is the one that you will pass in December, and those bills will come out generally, they're due in March. We are going to make an assumption this year of a 93% collection rate because that is consistent with our recent history has been. So let me explain that a little bit, though. So originally, we have just been seeing since about 2013 forward, we would collect somewhere around 97% to 98% of the levy. And then we would start seeing refunds come. And the refunds really started coming the last two years is when we started really seeing the flood in. And when you take those refunds and you apply them to the proper levy year, what we've really started seeing is that our collection role, our collection rate after those refunds have been about 93% across the board for the last several years. Last year, we even just collected about 93%. And I'll show you those numbers in a minute. So given that that seems to be where our revenues are falling now, we've decreased the percentage that we're assuming we're going to get in property taxes tremendously over the last several years. Last year, we went with 95% collection. There was some conversation about whether that was too generous. Turns out it was. So we're going to drop it to 93, 93% this year. That difference between a 97% collection rate and 93% collection rate, that's a lot of money. You're looking at closing in on a million dollars there. So when you start looking at our deficit position later, keep this piece in mind that a lot of it is coming from a loss of collections. So here's what I'm talking about, and I think you can see my arrow here. So back in 2014, we originally collected 98%, almost, you know, 98 and a half percent. But after the refunds came in, in total, you really only collected just shy of 94%. The same thing happened in 2015. We collected originally 98%. And then when the refunds started coming out, it brought us down to 93%. In 2016, we collected 97% and again, down to 93%. In 2017, collections were just low, started coming in at only 95 and a half percent. And after collections, we actually only ended up at 91 and a half percent collected. 2018, again, the collections themselves were low at 94%. And then when the refunds came in, we ended up just shy of 93%. Currently, we are 47% collected on the 2019 levy year, and that was as of June 30. I can tell you right now, those August bills, which we were very concerned about where we would be with those, they're still coming in. We were at about 90% last year on that 2018 levy. At the end of August, we were at about 90% collecting. You saw we gathered about another 4% over the rest of the year. Right now, we're sitting at a little over 86% collect. So those August bills are still coming in. The money's coming in. We have budgeted about $9 million. Let me see if it's my next slide. Yeah, here, we're budgeting about nine and a half million. Once debt service, about $10 million coming in this year. Right now, we're a little over eight million of that 10 million is in for the month. So some of this started coming in in July and a whole lot of it came in these first couple of weeks of August. So what we were hoping was going to happen, and that is that the mortgage companies, they had escrowed for those monies for the property taxes, and so they were going to pay them on a timely fashion. We have seen that happen. So the money is coming in pretty timely for the August bill. But again, we're going only to a 93% collect rate. So you'll see, we collected about almost 51% last year in the first installment, and we're estimating that we'll do another 42% to bring us to a total of 93% collection for this year. Then we'll do the 2020 levy in December. And we are assuming again, at a 93% collection rate would be about 46% collect in the first installment. So that's where we're at. And that's 46% of the total levy because you only, they only bill 55% of the prior year, but that comes to like 40%. So we're expecting another $11 million in the spring for a total of 21.2 million. Now, if you've been around for a while, you're going to say, whoa, that's really low. But remember, you abated $1.7 million back to the property taxpayers when you took on the property tax relief grant. And that money is now in your evidence-based funding. So essentially, what you're doing by taking advantage of the property tax relief grant is starting to move how much money you receive in totality from your property taxes to a state-funded instrument. So that goes to our state funds. So that would be the evidence-based funding model. Now, the, on the state... Oops. Yeah. This is not easy to do the waiting room at the same time, Dana. So on the evidence-based funding model, we are still at tier two. There is no new money in the evidence-based funding model. Zero. We haven't changed a bit. We are still at a 70% adequacy target. Our base funding minimum is still 6.7 million, but we also receive that property tax relief grant money, so about $1.7 million. So our total amount of money that we will receive in 2021 is the same as it was for fiscal year 20, which is $8.4 million. The balance of your state funds, you're looking at some money for private facilities that will get back for students that we have placed out, some orphanage money, which is some money that we get for special ed students who are ward of state, and our transportation claim for last year's money. This whole piece is going to get very interesting this year, given that so far, we're really not transporting any students. Also, the early childhood grant. Now, this number is very large, that 382. I do not believe we will use that whole 382. That funding is based on a per pupil expenditure, and we don't have the number of students to support that full grant amount. So I'll be working with Jackie to make sure that we only expend the amount of money that we believe will get back based on the number of students that we're serving in that program. And then on the federal side, of course, you've got your Title I grants, your Title II grant, which is all professional development, and your IDEA special education grant. IDEA is looking a little large because it's no longer flowing through the speed cooperative. We will be getting that money directly and then paying speed from that money for their services as opposed to them taking the money off the top and then giving us the balance. So you'll see that that number's a little higher than it has been in the past.
Hey, Fran. Can you... What do you know or have heard about sort of the future of this evidence-based funding model?
There's a lot of concern. There's an awful lot of concern. So there was a nice thing about being property tax-heavy because that money has been way more reliable than the state money has been over the last 10 years. Right now, we know that there's no additional money to continue to fund increases of the evidence-based funding model. And as a matter of fact, for a while there, there was an awful lot of concern that money was going to have to roll back because the state can't pay their bills. State still can't pay their bills. The economy is not great because people aren't working, because businesses are closed, because this pandemic has wreaked havoc everywhere. And until that starts picking up, you've got to expect that the state coffers are going to diminish. And when the state coffers diminish, they're not going to be able to pay their bills even more. I think eventually, it will affect the schools. So far, they've managed to keep it away from the schools, but it's only a matter of time. So...
When we start to make decisions, when we start having levy discussions and the grant discussions, we can revisit it then. But I mean, so what you just raised was what I was concerned about, like what is the future of this? Yeah.
Now, remember, when you agreed to do the property tax relief grant this year, it was a two-year obligation. So we don't have a choice but to abate again this year. It was a two-year commit.
So do we have to make any decisions about future?
Not this year. You have another year, which, I mean, almost is better because maybe we'll have a better idea of what that looks like then. But yeah, but right now, what's happening is we're shifting from local. You can see that's the lowest our local percentage has been very potentially ever over to the state side. And that's the highest it's ever been. And the federal grants are holding at about the same. They generally, that's actually a little higher and mostly because of that additional IDEA money that's actually going to speed. It's just how they're funding it now. But we've been about 4%, 5% every year. So it's really this swing from local to state. And obviously, it's still mostly locally funded, but your state piece is definitely getting larger, and it had everything to do with that property tax relief grant. One point, eight or $1.7 million in here and $1.9 million out here. Because remember, there was a net loss of $200,000 between the two pieces.
And then can you remind us that we have to agree to the abatement for two years, but do we only get the grant for one?
No. The grant is then rolled into your evidence-based funding model. It becomes part of your base funding minimum. That actually works to our advantage. So last year, we got the grant monies in last fiscal year. And that's really a big part of the piece of how we ended up being in a surplus position last year because that money came in last year in June and got booked. Now, this year, it becomes part of the evidence-based funding model, our monthly payments, and that money is already being, you know, given to us. The abatement will be for the 2019, so we already saw it starting this last year, and for this 2020 levy.
Okay. Fran, and I'm scratching my head because I'm trying to remember how this all kind of worked because the timelines are becoming a blur. But if I'm not mistaken, part of the evidence-based funding was also going to be tied into the proposal that we're going to have a graduate income tax. And that once, and this is where timelines are getting crazy, then the RONA hit and the state then kind of came out and said, okay, we're going to all but make sure that budget lines for schools were not going to be touched during this period of time, even though everything else is being impacted. Now, for the upcoming year, are we still hanging on to whether that graduated tax is going to have an impact on the evidence-based funding? That's kind of my overall question.
It was never formally linked. There were comments, but it was never formally linked. So they were talking about not really finalizing the budget until after that referendum hit the ballot. Honestly, based on where we're at right now and how much work is being done, I'm not sure how safe this $10 million coming from the state is. We just received the last quarter of mandated categoricals from last year, last week. So they're already behind. So far, they're making the EBF payments, but I don't know how long before the state runs out of money and what they're going to pay and what they're not. So am I really comfortable that we're going to see our full eight million in evidence-based funding? I'm a skeptic, and I've lived through too much of this. And I've seen where they didn't pay on general state aid, and I'm not convinced they're going to have the money to completely fund evidence-based funding with or without that referendum.
Okay, thanks.
And then again, by fund. So really, the majority of your money is coming into the education fund. And then here's your other three large funds, operations and maintenance, debt service, and transportation. And the rest of it's pretty small. So really, you're talking about your education fund. On the other side is where we start spending, and there's a lot of ways to categorize this. Again, you can go by our fund, which is, you know, that education, operations, maintenance, transportation. Obviously, education is our largest fund. You can go by function, which is what kind of activities are the expenditures charged to do, is it regular education, is it special education? And we'll talk about function a lot more. And then object, is it a salary? Is it a benefit? Is it a service? Is it a supply? By object, so salaries, benefits, et cetera. Obviously, we are a people-driven industry. So it's, you know, almost half of your total expenditures are people's salaries. Another 12% of that is benefit. So there you have it. You're already at, you know, 61% of your entire budget is people. Your purchased services, that $5 million amount included in there is going to be your transportation, is going to be your food service, is going to be money that you paid to other people to bring in services for you. And the biggest one, of course, being transportation. Supplies and materials is exactly that. It's stuff. It's your textbooks, it's your paper, it's your cleaning supplies, of which they are a huge amount this year. Your capital outlay, that entire amount here is your construction project. Okay, that's the air conditioning at Blossmore Hills and Western Avenue. And then other objects here is made up basically of two pieces. It is your debt service, and it is students going to private facilities outside that we can't service here. Non-capitalized equipment is more of your computers, small electronics, small cleaning things, those of that nature. And then termination benefits, which is really a tiny number, is its retirement benefits that we've contractualized. So here are your functions, and that's how the book that you have is really broken down is by function so that you can see where we are. But the picture really paints it very clear. We spend our money on regular education, and the blue line is last year and the orange line is this year. And what you're going to see for the most part is our budget is coming in under last year's budget in almost every area. But our biggest money, we're spending it on... But our biggest money, we're spending it on regular ed, special ed. Again. This is title one. Um, you've got your social work and other attendant services. And really up here, these are your facilities. This is, this number here, this large number is your construction project because last year we didn't do a whole lot of construction, but this year we did Western Avenue, Flossmore Hills. Your operations and maintenance, again, just keeping them running. Um, transportation. Special education, debt service.
Fran, I got a quick question. So just to be clear, the. Now I'm moving the cursor around. You can't possibly see. It seems so clear to me. The, on the far left, the column that says regular ed programs and special education programs, the third set of columns.
Yep.
Those are, those are completely separate from each other so that the, the column on the one side. Is really the, I'm sorry, the far left does not include any special education programming. Is that correct?
That is correct. These are your regular education teachers. These are your regular ed K12.
Okay.
These will be your instructional rooms and your resource teachers for the most part.
Okay, so if we stacked both of those lines on top of each other, that would be total teaching with human beings and programming.
Right. And when you stack those two on top of each other, let me make sure I've got the right number before I say it. When you stack those two on top of each other, you are going to come up with. About 41% of your entire budget.
Okay.
Okay. And that's where it should be. I mean, you're talking about teachers teaching students.
Right. And does, on a, on a year where we're not doing a big project. Like the construction project this year, is it still about 41% or does it, that go up a little bit?
It goes up a little bit.
Okay, so on a year-to-year, can you tell me from what you've just sort of can recall, is it roughly about. Somewhere between 42 and 45% of the budget per year?
That's exactly where it is. It usually, it fluctuates anywhere between, this is probably one of our lowest years and again, you, you've hit the nail right on the head is because construction is included. But generally you see anywhere between 42 and 45% of your budget is coming from there.
Okay.
So when you take a look at it all together and compare from last year, so this was last year's budget. Last year we budgeted 35.9 million dollars to come in in the revenue side. And this is where we actually landed and you'll see the big difference comes from your local and state and why is that? Well, our local monies were down. Our local property taxes did not come in as, as high as we had hoped that they would. And here we took on the property tax relief grant, came in, in June, so that increased our state number. Um, so we did end up with 36.6 million dollars. This year we are budgeting a four and a half percent decrease in revenues down to 34.3 million. The property tax relief grant is included in here, but your abatements and your reduction in tax collections are included in this number here. So again, the big, big change is going to be 93% collected and 1.9 million dollars abated back to the property tax.
Fran, did you say that is included in this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. On the expenditure side. Again, so this is where we were budgeted last year at 36.3 million. We came in at 34.4. We did see some decreases. These numbers are a little misleading because, okay, we didn't spend anything on capital outlay last year. So it seems, you know, it shows a huge decrease, but really in terms of dollars, it's really minimal. Really, your big money is coming up here. On, and again, we were able to, to save some on salaries when we shut down on March because we had a lot of, you know, extra duty and all those kinds of things that didn't happen. On. We were able to save some on purchase services. The biggest piece here was that once again, we had a light winter. So we didn't have to do a whole lot of snow removal. That, that accounted for a big chunk of the, the difference. On. And, and supplies again, when we shut down in March, we weren't purchasing anything from that point forward. Um. Those are your big pieces there. Um. Oops, sorry. I'm on your. We were anticipating about a half million dollar operating deficit. We ended up with a $2 million operating surplus. Again, 1.7 million of that being that property tax relief grant. Um, we actually had $673,000 of construction. Um, and this of year, of course, we're looking at the, the big project. So we got a $4 million number there. We ended last year at about 31.7 million dollar fund balance. We are estimating ending this year at a 25.9 million dollar fund balance, which is still very good. But we are going to have to start watching what we're doing, but the budget is still down 1% over what you had budgeted the prior year. Um, it's just that your revenues are down more.
Fran, remind us where our comfort level is with our fund balance.
Well, we've, we've gone over that several times. I, I will say that you are probably, my comfort level is still about a 15 million dollar mark. So you're, you are very much still, still comfortable. But we no longer, when we're starting to put up 1.7 million dollar operating deficits, you're no longer in a position where you can just sit back and say, it's not a problem. It is a problem now. Okay. So that's just putting the whole thing together for you. The revenue is up here. Your expenditure is down here on an operating basis. So that brings you to that 1.66. Then adding in your construction brings you to your total amount, your total deficit for the year and your ending fund balance. When you look on the state report, it's going to say. That it's an unbalanced budget. However, a deficit reduction plan is not required at this time. So what they do is they take these four operating funds and they take a look at your revenues and your expenditures. And they determine how much your deficit is. Your construction is included in here, right here. So it's showing a 5.2 million dollar deficit. They take that number and they multiply it times three. That's this. You have to file a deficit reduction plan with the state if your cash balances cannot cover that 15 million. Yours can't. Additionally, we know that this is not a repetitive number. So 12.6 million of that 15.6 million is not an issue. You are not anywhere close to having to file a deficit reduction plan. However, that doesn't mean you shouldn't take your deficit seriously.
Have you done a. Multi-year projection yet, Fran?
Actually, I have. I have a bug in the system right now because of the property tax relief grant. It's not giving me a really good number for next year, so I'm going to work with Forecast 5. Um, I'll be prepared to give you that chart on, at the 14th meeting. Um, it'll be, it'll be done by then because I do have 98% of it is done. It's just this one little bug and I can't figure out how to, how to force the system to make it work.
And in your projections, are you sticking with a 93% collection rate or are you going even less than that?
At the moment, I've left it at 93 at the moment. I'm hoping that it'll start to, to drop off because let's put it this way, once people get their refunds. Presumably the assessment will now be captured more appropriately. Additionally, you've now abated back almost $2 million as has the high school. Um, so with any great luck, people's tax bills are starting to be a little more palatable than what they were. You'll see that probably, I mean, you should have seen something in this second installment and I haven't seen anyone's bills to take a look at it. So you guys could tell me better than, than I can. Um, you should have seen a little less money than what you had historically seen because of those two abatements. So. Um.
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, before we get into expenditures, I have a quick revenue question. Um, and if I, if I didn't quite absorb this in the last 10 minutes, I apologize, but can you, like, looking at the, the federal. Funds that we're getting, there's, there seems to be a cross-categorical downward shift across all categories. Can you briefly editorialize that if possible? Is, for, for example, you know, as title one, we're down and.
All the federal grants are down.
Okay, is that, uh, is that from a federal decision? Is it a function of that's, it's just the circumstances of?
The federal monies are all down. State monies are all down. Everything is coming down.
The thing to ask you though is why? Why, we know where the state is. Why is the federal down? So just because we don't, we, do a few of our schools qualifying for title one?
Well, we still have the same number of schools qualifying. Our numbers are slightly down from where they were historically. Um, our low-income numbers are holding about the same as they have been for the last several years. But again, it's also compared to where everyone else in the state is and what kind of allocation we get. So we're once again put compared against all of our neighbors to figure out what the allocation is going to be for the district. And we're holding pretty, pretty well. I'm thinking in some of these areas that, you know, they've, they've had harder times than, than the Flossmore area has and that will shift the allocations away from us.
Okay.
I would just add, sometimes we, this is our initial allocation. Sometimes we get additional funds. When we're into the school year for title as well. So we'll, we'll have to wait and see if we get enough money or that additional money.
Okay, and with, with title two funds, is that, is that at all based upon. Teachers that have applied for something like tuition reimbursement or.
No.
Is it just, is it strictly, look, this is the much, this is how much you get and.
Yep.
Okay, so I guess my, my question and thanks Karen for clarifying is, is. Is this a policy decision from the federal government? Uh, is it a cutback? Is it something that, again, it affects how many students we have in the classroom year to year? Uh, or is it? Uh, we didn't apply for something that maybe we could have or.
Oh, no. I mean, we've applied for everything. It's really just a matter of how much money the state is getting from the federal government and then how much. We qualify compared to all the other districts across the state and how it gets allocated.
Okay, but that equation or that algorithm has not changed since last year?
Oh, that I do not know. I don't know. The state kind of comes up with a mysterious allocation. I don't really know how they do it. And quite honestly, I haven't checked to see, um. What the state of Illinois' allocation has been as a state year over year.
I, I know that one year, that they said they're prorating the things at 89%, which is like a 10% cut, you know. Um, in, in more plain speak. I just was curious as, as to. As to why the numbers dropped kind of universally with all categories. That's all.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so Fran, if we have a 1.6, 1.7 million dollar operating deficit. I assume you're going to tell us next where you're going to find 1.7 million dollars on an annual basis?
Well, we are going to talk about a few things. Yeah, so let's just talk about slight basic expenditures first because we just, we just put these. This report just got submitted to the state. It was based on last year's expenditures and once again, it's going to show you on a per pupil basis about how much money that we spent. Um, across the board in each of our buildings. I'm. Keeping in mind that once again, Western Avenue's number has to be the lowest. Um, because we are getting federal dollars for the other schools that qualify for title one that Western Avenue does not. So they're supposed to be getting additional funds on top. So when these numbers come through, that's the first thing I look at is Western Avenue the least because it has to be. Otherwise, we're doing something wrong with the title money that we get because it's supposed to go to the other buildings to add more for the students who need it the most. So that works out. Um, otherwise you can see we're really pretty close. We're, we're in the 14,000s to 15. So Heather is going to be one of your, your highest, but it also has your instructional rooms in there. And so they, they have two, two classrooms that have minimal students and, and more staffing. Um, so I would expect their numbers to be a little higher. Serena, I believe, had a lot of new teachers last year, so their salaries may have been a little bit lower. Um, but really this is kind of the grouping that I want to see, not really horribly off. One building doesn't really strike, you know, stand out that I can't explain and, and Western Avenue is the lowest to make sure that we are still staying compliant with the federal. Requirements. So those are the numbers that you will see on the report card when it comes out. And that was new last year and this is our second year of it. All right, so let's talk about 1.6 million dollars. About half a million dollars of it honestly is COVID-related expenditures. We have spent a lot of money on cleaning supplies, PPE. Temperature kiosks, thermometers, gowns, gloves, wipes, you name it. And trust me, every company out there is taking full advantage of the fact that we all want wipes and. You know. Oh God, hand sanitizer, unbelievable. I mean, when I saw that bill, I almost choked. So that's about half a million dollars right there. Okay, so that brings us to a million.
So Fran, just real quick, would you say that. That vendors, the prices have gone up because they're more competitive or for whatever reason?
You can't get it. And when you can't get things.
Right, supply and demand.
Yep, you got it.
All right, thank you.
Um, some things have become easier to get. Some things have begun gotten harder. Um. It's not unlike the grocery store. I mean, for a while there it was toilet paper, right? I can get toilet paper any day I want to now, but other random things are no longer available. And you still can't get anything that has the word Clorox on it to save your life.
Fran, can I stop you, can I stop you there and ask you about, so let's stop for a second to talk about COVID and where are we at with CARES? Have we, I, I know I've asked before.
CARES money has been written, has been, uh, some of it has been received because it's a reimbursement. So some of it was done. We have expended all of our CARES money.
Okay.
Um, there is still a small allocation out there that we've been told that we kind of have to put a pin on because, um. There's a lawsuit going on between the non-public schools and the federal government as to who's entitled to that money, as to whether. The money should be allocated based on low income.
One of the benefits of doing remote is that when we were doing both, we were.
I'm sorry, so. There is, there's an argument as to whether. We should be allocating the funds based on low-income students or based on total enrollment. And depending on which number you use, the non-public piece either is much higher or much lower. So the advice or the guidance that we've gotten from the state board is that we're to give the non-public schools the lower number. But then hold aside that higher number, that, that additional money. So I don't know whether we'll get it or they'll get it. It's still in the courts. So, but that's the only piece of the CARES money that has not been expended.
Okay, and additionally, so now that our transportation is also another huge chunk, how are the next four weeks going to bring that number down, not having to transport students?
At this point, we don't have a bill. I have not been approached by Cook, Illinois, um, for anything. Um, I think they're trying to figure out how. I think they're trying to figure out how, what this is going to look like and what all of their schools are doing as well. On when we were looking at hybrid, I actually was still going to see a decrease because. We generally run about seventeen routes. And then they're doubled, you know, they're the seventeen Parker routes, and then they go out and do the elementaries. I was able to get it down to eleven routes, and that was eleven routes with still only having like fifteen kids on a bus.
Okay.
So the number was going to come down from this, this number anyway. What's going to happen now and whether or not we even use buses at all this year? Put it this way, if we don't use buses at all this year, our deficit is gone.
And that's what I was.
Yeah.
Alluding to.
Strange. It's a strange year. However, we can't lose that, can't lose sight of the fact that if it wasn't a strange year. We would have a deficit.
Yes.
A million dollars a year.
Exactly. So we need to address that.
And why?
So that's where, you know, David kind of brought it up during the personnel report. One of the things that we really need to take a hard look at is our staffing allocations. Are they appropriate? Or are, do we have some luxuries in here? And and those are the hard decisions that have to be made. But as you saw, the vast majority of our budget is people. Um, you still have to transport, you still have to feed. We have a lot of money that goes into special education. We have a lot of money that goes to putting students in, you know, outplaced facilities, you know, in private facilities. Because we can't handle their needs here. Is there anything that we can do to make sure that we can handle more students needs here? That would be a little less expensive. Those are things that we need to take a look at. It it's not going to be one big item. It's going to be a lot of smaller items added together. And and those are just kind of the things that we're going to have to be very. Purposeful about when we start looking at what comes next.
Hey Fran. I was trying to find a good place to to have this part of the conversation, but it seemed like we're on expenditures. One of the things that I I noticed was an increasing trend. Is in our expenditures for. Outside services and. An upward trend in the amount that we're spending for special ed. Without getting too much into the weeds, maybe for the board, could you kind of talk about that a little bit now?
Yeah, I mean, private facilities are expensive. Anytime we place a student outside of the district, it's going to cost a lot more than it costs us to to be here. Um, so you'll have a very small number of students costing you an awful lot of money. So the real question is, are their needs so significant that we can't handle them here? And, you know, a lot of that, that happens within the IEP meeting and that's, you've got to do those things. I mean, that's, that's just required of you. But, you know, we just, we just need to keep a real close eye on it as to whether maybe there is a. Something that we can do in-house that that will allow us to keep students here as opposed to to going elsewhere. And maybe not. And I will tell you that it will also swing. With just different years, sometimes you've got a lot of kids with some serious needs and sometimes you don't. And and you'll see that number fluctuate. It's a very difficult number to predict. But it's just something you always have to keep an eye on. But I mean, if if the students require services that we can't provide here, we are required to to send them outward. Somewhere where they can receive the services that they need. So that that's a, that's a hard one, and that's, that's kind of more out of the finance world. And I'm not very comfortable speaking to it 100%. That's really, it's a lot of, you know, decisions from the special ed team and the IEP.
And and to the board, the reason I bring that number up is that these are big six-figure numbers we're talking about. So these aren't just low hanging fruit numbers.
Right, but. Forty-ish a year for outside services and. You know. I don't think that a lot of this is discretionary unless we have. A large number, not a large number, I don't know, five similarly situated students that we think we could bring in house to meet their needs here. And I think you'll remember that when we, in in some cases, this has also come up when we've been discussing potential expulsions and discipline issues. Because ultimately, if we recommend. Let's go to rise or the facility, we're paying for that also.
Yep.
So. I'd certainly be interested in hearing what. Opportunities are to bring things in-house, but I also don't really have the impression. Over the last two years that our teachers are. Hey, I can handle more students. I think, I think we've been trying hard to get students the services of the need. So especially confined money. That would be great, but. This is a very tricky area, you know. You don't want to. Bring a bunch of kids his house and then and then start getting lawsuits for not meeting their needs.
True, and I, yeah, I would definitely echo that what Cam just said in the same breath, though. Even before I was elected to the board, I did say that, you know, we're spending a lot of money to send our students out because it it does cost. And students deserve those services, and so we will give those students those services. But if there is a way for us to allocate the funds and to get the funds for us to take care of our students in-house, it's going to cost. But in the long run, will it be cheaper? And and I think if students can stay in district, I think it's definitely something to look, look towards and.
Then you have control of the cost. Instead of sending them to another facility where they can fucking charge you whatever they want.
Ma'am, this is.
Lisa, would you mind muting your? Thank you.
Yeah. All right, can I, I would just like to add without taking away from. Any of the concerns from the board members comments that. You know, it's. It's not a matter of, hey, let's find somewhere to, you know, put somebody. And it's, it's not a matter of. You know. Finding the cheapest place we can put somebody for the district. It's really servicing the students. And, you know, it's, you have to kind of think of it like. You know, if you go to your general practitioner. Sure, they could give you medicine for your asthma or whatever, but they would be better, you would all be better served if you went and saw. A lung person who specialized in that. Because at the end of the day. We want to make sure that the students' needs are met, and this is. This is a, you know, a federal requirement. This is, you know, these are, there's state guidelines on these. It's not, you know, and those are also applied to, as we said, kids who go to the rise. They go to rise because that is the best option for them. That is the best that we can do for them. And. That, you know, ultimately, they will hopefully be returned back to the. The school where they came from, you know, that's the goal. It's not to get rid of people. And these, the places that exist are not out there because someone thought, hey, let's make a lot of money and let's really soak the schools. You know, they have operating budgets. Christina, you and I, you know, go to a speed to sit in with board meetings. Where we have very serious conversations about how can we, you know, really maximize the learning experience with the resources we have? And frankly, the resources come from the federal government, they come from the state, they come from taxes. And. And with that, you're, you are, your mission is to find. The best education possible for your many students. And it's, it's not a, you know, this kid is like all the other kids, let's send him just to the, back to the factory. It, every kid has, is an individual, every kid has a unique set of needs. And that's also why we have IEP meetings where the team can get together and decide what is going to be best for that kid. There, I have never in the time I've been on this board or in this community had, well, really on this board I can speak to. Where there is a trivial conversation about. A discipline case and what we're going to do for a kid, not to a kid. And it was never a conversation about, we got to get rid of this child. As much as we have to find where this kid can be successful. So that when they do come back, because even a discipline. You know, if a fourth grader comes back, they come back in two years, and we want them to come back. As as well and functional as possible. And unfortunately, there is a price tag because. You, you. You know, things cost money, just like our school, just like this budget is about. And, you know, for kids who go to have, you know, services at speed. There is a very dedicated, impressive team of people who really dig deep to give the best. To our kids, and I mean all our kids. And unfortunately. You know, things are not. Inexpensive, and the more specific you get to a specific need, it just costs more money. That's the reality. But there are no trivial conversations about how much things cost. The services that we provide or our dedication and our commitment to each and every one of our students. Yesterday, today, and in the future. That's all I have to say.
So I don't think that. Well, so we have an operating deficit in, and I'm sure, I I think probably what Fran and Dana are looking for from us is. Very general parameters about how aggressively we want them to look into that. So no one here is going to come up with a, ooh, cut this and save us some money. I I said, I suspect, and Fran, I'm sure will tell me if I'm wrong. I mean, they've got their hands full right now with COVID and starting school. But. You know, this year's budget is sort of baked in where it is. But. I suspect that maybe by the end of the school year. Fran would probably have some recommendations for us. Is that reasonable?
Absolutely. I mean, I think we need to sit down as an administrative team and say, okay, you know, if we need to cut a million dollars out of this budget, where are we cutting it? Where does it do the least harm? Where is it furthest away from the classroom and away from really impacting each student's? You know, progress that that we can make some changes. I mean, I'm already looking at, are there ways that I can once again change maybe the boundaries of where the walk lines are? For our busing so that we, you know, we bus less students. I'm, there's a, there's a few ways that that we can do some of these things, but but we're going to have to kind of work at everything. And like I said, you're not going to find one big item. You're going to find a whole lot of little ones that are going to add up. But, you know, first and foremost, we just have to make sure that our staffing is, models are are correct. On that we're, we're hiring where we actually have a need and not just a want. Because the days of us just, you know, funding a want are over. We just, we don't have the money to do it anymore. If our, if our collections were still where they were, we'd be okay, but they're not. So we're going to have to adapt.
What's worse?
I would say that I think that this, the question for the board is, is that, does everyone agree that that's an appropriate timeframe for Fran and Dana to come back to us? With significant ways to close the operating deficit? And and before, it's, I would just put my two cents as follows. We've done a good job as a board, sort of turning some problems in the district around. We have. You know, improving school scores, improving performance. COVID has been a bit of a speed bump. But I expect that continuing as we approach, you know, dealing with an operating deficit, we should be careful not to harm the progress we've made there. So, you know, anecdotally. There aren't that many houses for sale in Flossmore right now. You know, and the house next door to me sold in a day. So that, you know, to the extent that's a good data point, the things seem to be looking up. And and then that all cycles back into tax revenue and, you know, overall financial performance. You know, I strongly suspect next year will be a good year for the economy. And it'll probably, but but we're going to have a bit of a. Problem getting through this year, the state may fall short on its payments. I don't know that the state has a long-term plan for fixing its budget crisis, so I sure will be dealing with that for a few years. But. You know, I think it, from my view, you know, it's, it's something we need to address, but it's not horribly urgent. And, you know, should be, we should have a plan by the end of the year. But, you know, it's, I I don't think it's urgent, needs to be done in the next, you know, three weeks. And and, you know, so that's my view of it is, we're moving in the right direction. Let's not step over, trip over our own feet in all the improvements we made. Let's look at getting rid of old technology that we don't use, surplus technology we don't use. Certainly, if, you know, there are personnel changes we can make. I think the, I'm the first question I'm going to have is, is guarantee me this won't. Move us backwards on student performance, so. That's my two cents, but I I guess really, is everyone comfortable with the end of the year? Or do you want to see results sooner? I don't know if Lisha and David, if you guys have a recommendation there?
Um. In terms of recommendation, I think that everybody really has said things that are appropriate for what we should do. Cam, your summary was on point. And from my perspective. I think that. We're dealing with the parties that have to be dealt with first right now, which is, today we were supposed to start school, let's push off the 24. Today we were supposed to have a remote and a hybrid, today we're doing remote. So we're dealing with projects that we deal with. That being said, from a financial standpoint. And all we've been trying to do as as board members, working with the finance committee. Is just trying to make it clear that, okay, guys, we need to look at this a little bit closer because times have changed. And. That's just a continuing conversation we're having. So recommendations to come out at the end of the year, beginning of the year, I'm all in support of 100%. Lisha?
So, yeah, nothing significant. The trend efforts and time are best used dealing with what we have right now. We have something that we are doing now, both not the best solution, but we have a solution. I would like to give her time to think this through. This isn't the first time that she's had this conversation with the finance committee. So nothing that is being said is like, oh, I never thought of that. So the end of the year, I am perfectly fine with. It seems reasonable. It gives time to give some real thought to it and not just. Make rash decisions or think of this inappropriately, so end of the year is fine.
Yeah, I think we. We work really hard, especially where the budget is concerned, budget or the levy, to. Use data to help us make informed decisions. And so the only thing we know is, is right now, and, you know, Cam, you just said it, you know, the budget is right now, what the budget is. Is what I do want to make sure we do, though, is that we allow up time. And we can figure out, Dana, how many board meetings, but we should make sure we allow enough time to actually have some pretty meaningful, thoughtful conversations. Because this is not just probably one conversation. And Fran, I know you're really good about coming back with several iterations based on conversations that we have. So I just, I don't want us to get to the point where we are now rushing to get to a decision. I want to make sure we build this into our calendar so that we can have pretty meaningful, thoughtful conversations. About it, because I know as history has shown, we have conversations. Fran goes back and scrubs some more numbers. She comes back with more pretty charts, then we give her some more. I mean, so I I just, I don't want people to feel like we have to rush through that conversation. So let's just make sure we allow the appropriate amount of time.
We'll definitely add it to our fiscal year board topics document, so that we'll have multiple opportunities to discuss it. And then, as you said, come up with a plan, rework it, revise it, come up with another one, then ultimately make the best decision that we can.
I think it would be helpful, though, and we don't necessarily need to discuss it in September. But I know, Fran, you mentioned that you had already started running projections. It would be helpful for us to have. Like, what are worst-case scenario, like, what does it look like five years? You know, it, give us enough lead time to have that information before we dive into more serious conversations about it.
We all love your graphs.
So I just want to be clear, so when we're saying we're going to have. When we're going to have this conversation, we're having it at the board level is what we're asking for. And so we're not saying the finance committee, we're saying we're going to have these conversations during our like Cal meetings or whatever.
I I think it's still worth. I I think it's still worth the finance committee taking a deeper dive, but I don't, I think it's an important enough conversation. If we're potentially looking at deficits of 1.6, 1.7 a year, it's worth the board also engaging in conversation, but with, you know, guidance, I think from the finance committee.
We we had done this process about six years ago, and it was, we put things in call of in groups A, B, and C. A being things that were universally accepted as yes, we should really put back on this. B were things harder conversations and C were things that were really just, you know, close to the bone. And we, I think we had these conversations over maybe two or three board meetings, so maybe a span of two months even. Where we, we ultimately made some decisions. Some were contentious, others were, you know, just really a quick agreement. So, you know, none of the, I was the only one who's was there from the board, but you know, certainly Fran. I remember you, everyone just thought it was a great process. And so I would imagine.
Yeah, we can do another process like that.
Yeah, I thought that was terrific. I mean, and every, you know, really, everybody at the end, I think, was okay with the decisions we made. And I think we, we were all better for it. I think it cut like, I want to say 1.4 million dollars. You know, so I think it was, it was not an insignificant amount.
I remember that. But so, but maybe that's actually, now that we, we do have two people who sit on the finance committee, maybe that's a great, I think, role for the finance committee and Fran.
Yep, we can do that. And actually, I need to drag the administration into it, too.
I totally trust Misha and Dave to do all the work.
Wholeheartedly.
So much.
Have I said lately how smart I think both of you are?
No, you're you're a great guy. Thanks for that.
Hey, Misha, good, 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 good work though, trying to get us out of the bag. I applaud you for me.
David, I was trying.
Okay, so Fran, is there anything else on the budget?
Not on the budget, then. It's already, it's out for public display. The notice has been put in the newspaper as of last Friday. On the 14th, you will have a public hearing and then you will adopt the budget and we will file it with the state of Illinois.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then we'll keep moving. And I'm assuming that's you as well, Fran, on construction update?
Yes, that is me as well. I'm, let's see. So where we are at, Western Avenue is pretty close to, if not at substantial completion. The chiller is on, air condition is going, they are working on controls, but all the unit vents are up. We do have a few unit vents that are going to need to be repaired or some fixing done because they did not come correct from train. There's some, some problems to them. But for the most part, Western Avenue is getting pretty close to doing punchless items and getting testing and balancing and controls taken care of. But but air is is working at Western Avenue. Right, Scott? Anything you need to add on that?
No, that's, that's, everything's good.
Okay, Flossmore Hills, a little different. We had five unit vents delivered this afternoon. They're the last five. And so they're finally here with us. Honestly, this week not having some staff and all students has made it a little easier for us to continue finishing up Flossmore Hills. We have turned the chiller on. It is is firing. So those building, those classrooms that have unit vents, they are, they do have air conditioning. They're starting to work on controls, but mostly they're really working on getting those last five unit vents up and working, finishing getting ceiling tiles put in around all of those new unit vents. Really, all the cleanup work and those, that that final, final push. And so we are hoping that by by weekend time, we'll be at substantial completion for Flossmore Hills as well.
Does that include the defective units?
So we have a few defective units. So like, things like, one of them shipped without a heating coil. Well, that was dumb, but I'm at least we don't need the heat right away. So we'll, we'll be taking care of that. There's a lot of dents and dings and and parts that just aren't working well. One of the guys from from Henry Brothers kind of joked around that he's pretty sure Train is sticking them in a box with, you know, the paint's still still wet and running. So, I mean, they're just really trying to pull them off the production line, but, you know, they've been working at half staff out there in in North Carolina to try and, you know, keep up with production. But because of COVID, they can't be running their full manufacturing line. So I I'm just happy that we've got them all here at this point. Yes, there's going to be some bumps. We're going to have to fix some things. And Train has already been out to to look at the unit vents that we're saying are are problems. Correct, Scotty?
Yes, that is correct. Actually, all of them.
Yeah. So, so they're very much aware of what the issues are with with their their unit vents. But right now, my bigger concern was let's get them all, let's get them in and let's get them operating and then we'll work on what we need to fix on those. But we are very close to substantial completion.
So how many classrooms are we going to have are out of commission this week? And how many will still be out of commission next week from an AC perspective?
There are five of them out of commission right now because they didn't, the unit vents just arrived today, but I believe they are hoping to have those up and installed and going by the end of day Wednesday. Was that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And and the teachers that are supposed to be in those rooms have a place to work?
They do. They do. There were two of those rooms that were supposed to be hybrid rooms, but there's no such hybrid now. So and even then, we had plans for moving them if we needed to. And so the the teachers, you know, they'll go to another classroom or or wherever in the building. But we're really hoping that by the time the week is out, there's air in in all buildings. There may be guys walking in and out, trying to get the controls right. But the real hardcore construction will be complete before we deliver.
Fran, the budget is still good. We've not run into any other issues?
Not at all. As a matter of fact, our contingency line is going to come in way under.
Awesome.
Any other questions for Fran about construction? Okay, thanks, Fran. We will move to the next item, which is special education nursing contract.
You're muted, Dana.
Yes, sorry, you should be able to see. I believe you can see it here. Hold on. Just putting up the board. Jack, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Yep.
Great.
Hello.
By all means.
So the first recommendation is we have a student that requires specialized nursing care. He needs, or the student requires one to one nursing because of his, of the IEP and their needs as far as feeding throughout the school day. So that's the first one. So any questions at all about that first discussion item? Guys, good?
Pretty straightforward.
It is pretty straightforward, yes.
Up here, one moment.
Okay, the second one is through our Lincoln Way districts. So we do have students that require orientation and mobility services, which unfortunately, speed does not provide those. And those are for our students that have vision impairments. So those students, those services consist of helping them to maneuver their environment, helping them to you know, be able to really orientate themselves wherever they are. And each year that changes as classroom changes and things like that. So again, these are, this is again, something we need to provide for our students that have those vision impairments. Any questions about any of that or clarifications?
That's an annual cost in that number?
Yes.
I think David had his hand. Did you have your hand up, David? No, I thought I saw him raising his hand. Okay.
That number, is that a comma after, between the six and the seven?
Yes.
Is that a typo or is it a?
Oh, that's a, yes, that should be.
It'd be a comma, sorry. Should be a comma, yes.
I figured.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Great.
Next, we have our school improvement plans.
Absolutely. Well, certainly glad to continue with our school improvement plans. As you know, we shared the first two earlier in the summer, and we had Parker Junior High and Flossmore Hills present. And now we have our next three elementary schools. We'll start first with Heather Hill and Ashley Holland before going to Serena Hills and Beth Reich, and then finally to Western Avenue and Gina Isabella. Ashley.
Hi, good evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody on here. So looking at our school improvement plan, we met with our BLT a few different times throughout the course of the summer, and we really had to take it and look at it differently, obviously, than we have in the past. And one of the big conversations we really had was on culture and climate. During our first district building leadership team, we worked with the ISC board to really dive deep into our social emotional indicators that that we were diving into. And we had decided as a, as a building, there were three descriptors for our SEL descriptors that we really wanted to focus on this year. And those included identifying emotions, communicating clearly, and empathy. So throughout the year, we're going to be making sure that we're using capturing kids' hearts along with our Second Step program and PBIS and trying to integrate it also into our curriculum of where those, those descriptors will fit in. We have a wonderful new social worker that's going to be working with us as she's doing services throughout the building for students that need them. She will also be working with the teachers, primarily focusing on these three descriptors for Sel to work on that. The other thing that we're going to do is taking our capturing kids' hearts, the next step. Our team did a great job last year. I'm diving right into it and and implementing it, you know, throughout the building. But we want to go deeper. And one of the ways we're going to go deeper is with our social contract is to make sure everybody has their word of the week that they're going to focus on. We had our contracts up, we referred to our contracts, but we didn't really narrow down into the depth of our our social contract. So that's one of our goals this year that we're going to do. Also, with our capturing kid's heart, we're going to be making sure that we're doing the self assessment at least twice a year. And having the staff really be honest with themselves, go through that self assessment and make personal goals for themselves of where they can move, move a little bit deeper into the practice of using capturing kids' hearts for our SEL component. For instruction for our math and our ELA, you know, we're going to be at like, like the rest of us diving really deep into thoughtful classroom, looking at all those different strategies and how we can implement them into our, into our everyday learning. We also are going to be using the learning continuum from the NWEA map. We know that we're going to have this gap from our students that they're, we're going to be a little bit all over the place, given what they had from March to now. We really want to make sure that we're learning, using that learning continuum along with our district assessments and through our curriculum to really develop a plan for each child. So they, that they kind of have a plan of know where their students are at and then where we can, we need to move them. So using more than just the standard. And then for our achievement gap, we're going to be doing the same thing, but on a deeper level. Each student will have their own official learning plan in our MTSS in tier three, where they have their own goal setting, along with for self reflection. That's something that we really want to add to our our tier three achievement gap part is that there's some self reflection on what the students are learning and where they want to move, move to with their learning. So we'll be using our Bridges interventions, our map, using those learning maps to create those goal setting and self reflection sheets to help monitor their progress throughout the way. So those are overarching plans that we have this year. We know that we're going to be, you know, making adjustments as we go. But we really are going to really start to focus on culture and climate, making it a huge priority. And then moving into finding out exactly where our students are currently and where we're going to take them by the end of the year. In a nutshell, very quickly.
Yeah, quick question. Ashley, I love that you're addressing culture and climate. Do you have, can you give us an idea of how you know that you'll have been successful? In addressing that?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, in in the past, I've been, you know, going on my third, you're very blessed to be starting my third year here with the district. And we've used, we have used our Second Step program. And, you know, but really, we haven't, to be honest, dove deep, deep, deep into that, the assessments that come with that. So one of our goals is because we picked those three descriptors, we really are going to be, our team is going to be matching up which lessons match those descriptors. So we really, we're going to be doing that and creating little assessments that go along with that. I actually have been in contact with capturing kids' hearts. I'm really close with one of our facilitators, and we're really working together to come up with where the teachers have their assessment to kind of see how they're doing. We also want to try and create one for our students to kind of just kind of take a quick snapshot of how they feel that it's going, you know, remotely, obviously, this is the right to start with, or in the classroom, you know, virtually. So diving and taking those data points to kind of see how we do from there.
Okay, and, you know, obviously, you know, if there's less kids in a building, there's less elbows that get bumped into each other and they have different kinds of interactions. Is this something that, you know, and again, we're in an unusual time, but that we're going to be able to carry over into when we're back to a more typical in-person classroom and school environment?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, one of the things to to feed off of that is that in the past, looking at those SEL descriptors, I think is huge. And when we met with the team for the first time this summer, that was some of the time, first time that some of the teachers have seen the SEL descriptors, you know, it either it's been a really long time, but you have a bringing it back up. And the rich conversation that we had around those really helped plan the picking out those three descriptors that we know for this year we want to focus on. So I think it'll be just like everything else that we keep looking at it, see how are we doing? There's a different level to the descriptors. And then, you know, it it will, it'll maybe morph into a different descriptor, you know, as the time goes on. Yeah, I think it's something that's going to be here to stay for a while at Heather Hill at least.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Oh, just one quick thing. And I'm, I'm sure you're on this already. So as you mentioned, the teachers will be creating assessments for this themselves. Will it be kind of a broad supervision of, hey, classroom A and B are doing this, classroom C and D? This is what their assessments look like, just so there's cohesion across. And the reason I mention this is, and again, I'm sure you're doing this, but if you could just sort of maybe talk it out. You know, one of the things we, I think we've come a long way the last three years, and we are blessed to have you.
Thank you.
Is, is that I think we are becoming a lot more consistent at the educational experience in every class across the district and certainly across buildings. So just in that respect, you know, can you describe those conversations briefly?
Yeah, yeah, I I work with a phenomenal team of principals that we work together on a daily, sometimes hourly basis, talking about what we do. And then within creating the step plans, as we worked with our BLT team, we also kind of went back to each other and talked with each other to see kind of where we all kind of on the same page and are we moving forward in the same direction? And I, to be honest, I've got a lot of great ideas from my colleagues and I've shared a lot with them. So I think that's going to be key is just to keep our awesome team together and keep moving forward. And we've got great leadership that's guiding us. And then we just keep moving forward to keep that consistently across the board.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
See, you just made me think of something. How, and and I don't know if you can even answer this question today, and it may even be something more for Dana or Annabelle. How do you? How do you? How does capturing, how do you pivot from using and fully implementing capturing kids' heart, which relies so much on you being in the same physical space as students? How do you now pivot in in fully implement capturing kids' heart remotely? What does that look like? And how will those assessments be adjusted to ensure? Because I know we, you know, working remotely is quite, it has its, there are challenges and there are opportunities to do.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right. But I do know programs that rely, you know, on being able to see and experience emotions sort of firsthand, like, how is this going to work remotely? And how do you plan to, you know, create, you know, find the tools that you need for those, your own radars to go off to to even know that something may not be working for a particular child or they may, there may be a day that's off, right? It's just, it just, it's just different, right? So I am curious, and you don't have to answer this right now, but I am curious, I think, from all of the principals, you know, in the coming months to, you know, talk to us about what does this program look like remotely?
Right. And I can speak to that just for a little bit because we've had the conversations with our team, you know, and it's one of those things where we are going to be creating that social contract. We might not be, you know, writing it on a physical notepad, but we might. It depends. Some, I have feeling some teachers are going to be doing it virtually. So it's something that they put up every morning and they talk about it and go that way. Some will have it in their easel behind them. They can constantly see it and refer to it. It's one of our goals to make sure that we are referring to it. And then I think there's other ways. We're starting every morning with good things. It's built in in the teacher's schedule already. When we make them, it says good things, it says lunch. You know, things like that will still be in place. There will also be different ways to get creative. We've been doing some research on ways to celebrate with our students virtually and ways to kind of keep that that pom pom jar, you know, keep getting filled and found some really cool ways. So it'll be just something that we keep keep exploring. And then, like I said, we will make sure to keep, Miss Jackie Jenicki has, you know, we've worked together to create her team and SEL quick little screener, you know, just to kind of check in. So we plan on having the same, check in with the students to try and keep a tab that, you know, everyone's kind of moving along at the same pace emotionally from there. In a brief, quick, I guess, a quick overview right now tonight.
Yeah. Well, and just one other thing, if you can follow up on later, I would be interested in learning more about, you know, how do you, some of what happens with capturing kids' heart is one-on-one, not in front of the classroom, you know, so all kids can hear, right? So how will you all have sort of these sidebar conversations, if you will, students when, you know, when you need to do that?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll be definitely growing, like you said, lots of opportunities throughout the year to, to, you know, prep us and grow our craft even even stronger.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know to what extent we feel comfortable encouraging this, but I feel pretty confident in saying that many of your K through three parents are not that far away from their little ones with their city doing stuff properly, right? And so, you know, I try to at least be earshot away and I can hear when, you know, my kid or even some of the other kids on the call are not having the greatest day, right, for whatever reason. But it's, it's harder to have that kind of conversation in a Zoom or, you know, WebEx call with 25 kids. And even, you know, part of capturing kids' heart too is like, it's real time. And so that's kind of lost in some way remotely. And this is not a criticism. It's just a program that wasn't necessarily designed to be remote. So I will be interested in the fall for us to loop back and have this conversation and hear about sort of creative ways principals and teachers have implemented capturing kids' heart remotely.
Yeah. And just one, one more thing off of that, we've had some teachers, you know, start to get really creative. We're lucky to have Go Guardians. So we've learned how to split screens and have sidebar conversations while the class is still going on where it's not grouped in. So like I said, these are these are baby steps that we're taking and it definitely will get stronger, but but the teachers are doing a phenomenal job. They did a phenomenal job in the spring and just working with them last week. Their, their, their brains are going, you know, going a mile a minute having creative ways to connect with everybody. So I'm excited to share with you a little bit later more what they've done.
I think this is where parent contracts could come in handy, right?
Absolutely.
I I would follow up with his teacher last year or this spring and say, you know what, he wasn't having a good day today. And I don't know if you heard it in the, on the call, but I heard it. And and it's, it's fine. It's just, just, you know, it's, it, it's almost like in order for it to work as well as it has in the past, there has to be almost a parental involvement or just more creative ways how you do this.
Yeah. Well, capturing kids' hearts, their facilitators are great. You can call them and text them in a drop of a dime. So we're lucky to have that. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Oh, I guess we are out of order. It's Western Avenue next. My apologies.
That's okay, Dana. I'm still ready to go, even though we're out of order. Everybody, how is everyone?
Excellent.
We are excited to be, it was great to be back last week and see everybody in the building and just kind of not be walking around the school empty now. So that was really nice. And while we are looking forward to seeing the kids today, we are just ready to shift gears instead. So now we're just going to plan differently. So a lot over the summer with our SIP teams, they worked really hard this summer to brainstorm how we can meet our students' needs. And we first, you know, both academically and that social emotionally part, while at the same time growing ourselves. So we were looking at things we did last year and what we still wanted to keep improving upon, and then what were some new things we were ready to tackle? In our culture and climate, our classroom teachers really work to build up those social contracts, but we wanted to work more on our students now holding each other, holding each other accountable with the checks and the fouls. And so kind of Ash, like how you said, are we going to do that? We're really going to focus on even in the remote setting, the kids building those social contracts. And what are some symbols we can use to make sure, hey, check yourself. I saw somebody not doing one of the etiquettes we put for us. So our social contract is going to be built now for a remote setting. What does that look like remotely, being kind, being respectful, and going through all of that etiquette for online? So we want to turn that accountability over to the students. We also are going to look into a hopeful book study. We're going to be reading Fostering Resilient Learners. And it focuses on kids with trauma. And even now, we sometimes think that, well, our kids aren't going through the trauma, but this pandemic is trauma for them. Not being able to go into the classroom and see their teacher and interact with the kids. And so each month we'll be tackling a part of the fostering resilient learners and it's for our entire staff. So our paras will be reading it, everybody there, so we can get together. And we're going to be using our Canvas system to do our book study through. And so everybody can still be with one another on that. And we're going to be utilizing our second step lessons more. Our social workers put together a very easy second step 101, exactly where they can use these in each of the remote parts. And so we'll be going through those lessons and really working those in with morning meetings that we've built into the remote schedule and when we go back into our hybrid schedule. So we'll start our day with a morning meeting, talking about our good things and getting into those second step lessons. And like Ashley said, we have a great coaches in CKH that I needed a copy of something and she got back to me right away the next day. So they've been working with us to make sure that we can carry CKH throughout in this remote setting. When we looked at our instruction, we're really utilizing those feedback, the tools from Thoughtful Classroom, and we're actually doing a couple that deal with peer feedback. We wanted to boost their writing when it came to the reading responses and even to the math responses. And did we get everything we needed in there? And so we're using a couple of the Thoughtful Classroom tools that focus more on peer feedback. And we picked them because even in the remote setting, whether we're in our little grades with our K two kids, giving glows and grows through a flip grid or using the actual Thoughtful Classroom tool of peers that goes through each letter acronym, we can give feedback whether we're in the remote setting or the hybrid setting. We'll also be really digging into that targeted group instruction with the learning continuum from MAP and then our common assessments and our end of year assessments. So that when we're doing small group, we are pulling the kids exactly what your little group needs. What is it that we're targeting for you? And so really having those individualized learning plans. And then, of course, continuing to work on our Canvas implementation for engagement during those times. When we're looking at our achievement gap, we are really going to be focusing on our tier three students there and doing goal setting with them. We've used a couple Thoughtful Classroom goal setting tools that the students will start their intervention for that week on a Monday. Let's set our goal. What are we working on? What is that action item? And then making sure we review it by Friday's intervention time. So we have a couple of the different Thoughtful Classroom goal setting tools that we pulled out to make sure they're appropriate for each grade level. And then, of course, we said it doesn't have to just, you know, anybody can use our goal setting tools. Our interventions are also, again, very targeted. We have two instructional paras that'll be targeting some of our tier two kids. And our MTSS coach is working really closely to make sure that we maximize our intervention and win times at every grade level so that we have a lot of people really helping with all of our kids who need those interventions at both ends. And then we're also working on, we know the parents will be at home, all of you now. And so we're putting together our MTSS coach and our reading specialist, and we're getting together tutorials. This is how you read with the students. If your student's working on this intervention, this is what we mean when we're talking about that blend or a diagram. So that way we can help you out at home as well. And so we'll be putting together those tutorials that'll be accessible on our reading coaches Canvas account there. It'll have different tutorials, lots of resources. Because sometimes when it comes to what we're struggling with, we want to make sure that we give our parents the tools they need as well. So we're going to be working on that. So we give our parents the tools they need at home as well to support our learners. And really, everything we kind of looked back to, to make sure it really matched that school-wide theme. We said, no matter where we are, if we're remote or hybrid, we are a wolf pack. And so we are here to serve, inspire, and really lead that pack, no matter where we are at. So we're excited, you know, we have a, we have a great mascot for this because, you know, we say the pack sticks together. So no matter where we're at, we said it really works for us. And regardless, we had worked on all of these things in the summer when we were doing both those models. So we really picked things that we knew we could do remotely and in that hybrid setting.
Steve? I love the parent resources thing that you did. I was, I was really happy listening to what you're doing. I loved the parent resource thing. And I would, just as a parent who no longer has, who has had kids at Western Avenue, I, I would love to be able to access that on the, not on the specific interventionist canvas, but rather if there's some sort of link that you felt confident with on the, on the actual webpage for, for Western, I think that would be a terrific resource for, for all parents, including parents whose kids are reading well above grade level and already seem to have some, some strategies working. You know, I, again, and I think that this is something I've been, you know, advocating for years that we, this is a terrific thing for parents to have because it is very frustrating as a parent when you really want to help your kid, but it's, it's hard for you to project down to your age of what you are struggling with when you're in your 30s, 40s, and 50s, in my case. And you, you can't relate to their problems as much because you're already have a couple degrees under your belt. Do you understand? So kudos, great. It's wonderful, but I would love for everyone to have access to that and at some point. You know, hopefully this could be expanded across the district because I think this is a great resource.
Thanks. We'll work on that. Start small and put it together and then hopefully else we can push that out.
Perfect.
If I could, I I'm being out, so I'm here on speaker. I would love to applaud you in addressing the social and emotional, the trauma that these kids have.
Well, you're breaking.
You want to try switching to audio only, Christina?
It's okay.
Well, she was applauding your efforts for highlighting, I think, the, the fact that the pandemic, this is a traumatic experience. So I, I echo that, I think. Yeah. So calling it that, but I think also, and just as a district, helping parents figure out what to do with that, right? I mean, for many people, this is the first time their kids have experienced anything traumatic and it affects different, it affects kids differently. And some of them haven't even truly felt the impact of it yet. And so I think we tool, give parents the tools to acknowledge that this is traumatic, but also work to to not make it feel like the world is ending, right? Like, how do we, how do we still get excited about, you know, a new spelling word that they just conquered or a new book or a new math problem or even, you know, you know, next week when they get to zoom in and see their friends and, you know, a new classmate, right? So how do we, how do we reach, channel that energy, but still understand that this is, this is traumatic, but not not, you know, transfer our own fears, whatever that might be, onto our kids at the same time? Yeah, I mean, expecting your, your anybody student SIP to address all of that, but that's just the reality, right? Like, I mean, this is a traumatic experience and many kids aren't fully aware, have fully felt the impact of what all of this is.
It's cumulative too. It's kind of like snowfall. And after a while, it just, it builds up. And so, yes, I agree as well. I would also, with those conversations, beware of secondary trauma or vicarious trauma that staff pick up on. And I guess just across district, I mean, this is a reality that, you know, teachers, administrators, support staff, you know, are all going through this as well, you know? And this is a, but Michelle, I think you brought up a great point that it's very easy to project, you know, your own triggers or areas of concern onto kids where sometimes they don't have them yet. So, but yeah, it's, 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 I, yes, I cannot, yes, applaud you for that as well. Great job.
We, we really liked the book I've already read and it's just, it addresses self-care for staff as well. So how to make sure you take care of yourself. But then recognizing those things that sometimes we take as just behaviors. But then our PBIS team is also going to be working to address, how do we keep those school spirit things going? How do we celebrate all the good that we're doing? So they are also ready to be like, okay, once we get settled, how are we going to figure out, you know, how to celebrate those things as well? So it's great still to have our PBIS team that's ready to look at that aspect as well.
Dana, I wonder if it's worth, once the school year gets started, you know, I think I asked whether or not we were going to be doing parent universities this year or, or whatever it is that we're calling it. But, I mean, we have great social workers, right? I mean, so maybe it's worth having a session, you know, that's just, you know, helping, you know, hear five coping skills to help your kids, you know, have a successful school year or something like that, that allows parents the opportunity to just sort of, and it's something that can be done on a building by building level as well, but some way getting the, our social workers sort of involved in the conversation.
Definitely. Anything else for Gina at Western Avenue?
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Gina. And finally, certainly, last but not least, we have Beth Reich from Serena Hills.
Good evening, everyone. I was going to teach you about you saved the best for last. Um, so the Serena Hills BLT met several times over the summer virtually and communicated via email, et cetera, in trying to put together our SIP plan. And we feel like we've got a really And we feel like we've got a really great plan for our building. The theme kind of throughout it is togetherness or community. We really feel like that is one of our shining stars, but it boop. Um, and that we really, um, want our community to feel that we are in this challenge right now that we're in together. So we created a world, a school-wide theme, together we will be. And then there's a multitude of things or Bs that we can all be. We can be happy. We can be, uh, resilient. We can be, you know, strong, et cetera. So we wanted, we were going to have the children, um, originally they were going to select a word and then we were going to fill up a bulletin board with all of our collective words. And, and together as a community, it was a visual reminder of everything that we were. That will probably be happening through either a flip grid or some other online tool, but to continue through with that process. So we can see that together as a community, we're a lot of different things, but we come together as one. Um, our climate and culture goals that we were going to center around was continuing, uh, implementing fully with fidelity, CKH, and really getting into that daily launch. We had planned on the end of our day at Serena, kind of a melding together a couple of things that are here on our, uh, plan together. The student journaling and the launch was going to happen at the end of the day. And, um, I shared with my BLT, I listened to a podcast this summer and one of the things was, it was the professor who has a class on happiness at Yale. And she talked about that if you center yourself on three gratitudes every day, it begins to change your mindset. So as part of our end of the day procedures at Serena, we were going to have everyone write down three things they were grateful for. We were going to have a journal topic of some type. The teachers could use this as an SEL check-in. They could use it as a, what was your favorite thing today? They could, they could use it as a free write. They could do whatever they chose to do for the journaling. And then we were going to close the school day with a school-wide launch. Send them out on their way back home with a positive message, um, and have us all move on to the next part of our day together. We also were going to do, and we've started doing this through, uh, solidify our family connections even stronger than we have in the past through home visits. Home visits didn't have to take the traditional method of me going up and knocking on the door and saying hello to whomever, though it could. But we were going to have teachers meet through, meet families through Zoom meetings or Google meets, uh, phone calls, et cetera, to create that community. So we build that relationship and get it as strong as possible. Through instruction, we wanted to continue to sharpen our saw through co-teaching. We began co-teaching this last year with our reading teachers and our EL staff and our sped team. And we were going to continue to sharpen the saw on that and make sure that that co-teaching also equated into really precise, small group instruction. We're going to be sharpening our saw the next few days on what that looks like now that we've gone fully remote. So that's going to be some, a process that we're taking on. Goal setting for students, we were going to be setting goals a few different ways, um, just so we have the children keep track of their learning, keeping track of their growth targets. Um, I've always found that to be really super successful if we have the kids get their growth target for MAP. And then when they take either winter or spring, track that, that, uh, target and their growth and hitting the goals. We could also do that through, um, through reading inventories, whether the children use, um, teachers taking an FMP or whatnot on a reading log and seeing that their levels are increasing. Um, we could also do it through our number corner assessments too. So we track different, different points in their learning to see that they're growing. Then to, um, address our achievement gap, we were going to challenge ourselves to begin the ANA Plan. And the ANA Plan is a plan that originated down in Anna, Illinois, and it addresses first grade readers. And what it is, is for about 25 minutes each day, first grade, you take a multitude of staff, reading specialists, EL specialists, sped specialists, et cetera, and you attack first grade. And every student gets a reading lesson for about 25 minutes with a group of children at their level. So you take all your first graders, put them together, break them up into small groups and somebody works with that stu, with those students at their level, in addition to their normal reading instruction. That again, is going to be one of our, you know, plans that we kind of get together with in the next couple of days and see how that, how we make that actualized remotely. And then lastly, we were going to begin student reading logs and not your traditional, you're going to go home and read for 20 minutes and mom sign off on this notebook kind of reading log, but more of have children track what they're reading just so they start learning that reading can be found for pleasure and enjoyment. And it's not just a chore of 20 minutes after school. So whether you want to, you know, draw your favorite illustration that you saw in the, in the book or whether you saw, um, your favorite quote that you had or something that made you, I wonder, um, an animal that you learned about, whatever, something that just spurred them to kind of keep track of, I'm continually reading and here's where I'm finding pleasure. And I've rattled through that really fast. I think that's, that I have addressed all of our issues that I wrote out. So, um, the Serena team is really ready to go and hit this challenge head on. Um, I'm really excited to get with the teachers tomorrow and the next few days to kind of revamp some of these things and what they'll look like as we move forward remotely. But we're ready for it. Any questions?
I was looking for like a dancing star or something.
I know.
You know, I'm a little disappointed, a star on a bike or something.
That's right. The pun was pretty good.
Right, yeah.
I got it. I got it right away. Didn't want to interrupt.
I think, um, we, we talk a lot about coherence. We talk a lot about alignment. We talk a lot about, uh, really organizing our work, uh, in the district. So I think what's, what I really take away from all these school improvement plans is that we work really hard to set those degrees of freedom for our buildings. And so as a district, we're moving in this direction. But I think one of the other pieces, and it's really come out tonight, but also the last time we had these conversations, is really around, um, the expertise that our building administrators and their building leadership teams and their teachers and their parents kind of put into these plans and really kind of take them further based on the needs of the building. So to keep it brief, just kudos to the principals and their leadership teams for putting together plans that really address adult behaviors and how they'll translate into, uh, student objectives and student performance. So I'm excited to see the plans in motion this year. Obviously this is different, but our expectations and the rigor of our school improvement plans can't decrease just because, uh, we're in a different setting. So we've adjusted those and we're ready to get started.
Can you circle back with us in some time in the fall and let us know how the ANA Plan is working?
Oh, absolutely.
It can be something, um, that you can do to scale and across grades and, and replicated in other buildings as well.
Yeah, it's, it, I'm so excited to start it because it's been a, I read about it about three years ago and it's not new, but I just finally came across it and I'm really excited to be able to. We tried to do something similar to it last year and it kind of got off the rails a little bit. It didn't end up being exactly what we were looking for, but this year I'm really excited to do it with fidelity and see how it turns out. Cause if we catch those early readers, right? If we get them reading by third grade at grade level, we're golden. So that's where we're, we're trying. I, I started with the BLT. I suggested we bite off more than we should chew. I'm like, what about if we try second grade too? And they were like, why don't you settle down just a little bit? Right? We'll try first and get successful there and maybe trickle it out. So.
Hey, Beth, I figured out what your, uh, your, your theme should be. Sorry, I'm not driving anymore, so I can turn my camera on. It needs to be like aligning your stars or something of that nature, like something, something about your, um, your constellation or mapping your constellation, something like Dana, don't roll your eyes.
I'm enjoying this pun talk. And I love the imagery. Let's, let's, that's a fun.
I got a recommendation. You can be a star in the darkness.
That's right.
There you go.
Also, I'd love to do a shout out to the Serena staff because Friday, um, everybody, everybody was so eager to get our kids that all of a sudden an email went out about nine 30 and they're like, how about a parade? So at 12:30, we drove all of our neighborhoods honking our horns and saw some of the most adorable sights of families joined together out with signs, teachers are heroes. I mean, it made, it was worth all the summer Zoom meetings, right? And, uh, it was fantastic. So shout out to my staff for being just such great people and wanting to dive right in. Christina, you can attest, we were all quite happy. There's some big smiles from the grownups.
I cried, like, I'm like, this is unreal. I couldn't even, I was unloading my groceries. I didn't even check my email that day. And I was like, why are all these people driving by? It was the most amazing thing I have ever witnessed.
Yeah.
Um, okay. I think that takes us to the last item on our agenda, which is the first reading of several revised policies.
Eric's going to read these to us, right?
Yes, one by one.
Word for word. One by one, line by line, word for word. So, um, you may or may have not heard that, uh, the Department of Ed has released their final title line, guidance on what that means for schools. So there's really nothing that changes in terms of how we would investigate a claim of sex discrimination or, uh, sexual harassment. It's just, we have to have a title line, sexual harassment coordinator, which that will be Dr. Smith. And just different, um, how, different reporting in the event that we do get an instance of, uh, sex discrimination or a sexual harassment claim. I'm hoping that we don't. We do a lot of training, annual training on sexual harassment and Workplace Transparency Act, which also deals with sexual harassment in Illinois. So, um, all of our staff is well-trained on what not to do. But these are just policies that we had to have in place and ready for the start of the school year.
That's it?
That's it. It's so anticlimactic.
I, I know, I'm sorry.
One notes version. Okay, Cam, do you have any questions for Eric?
Uh, right now.
Um, all right. I think that, that, that brings us to the end here. Um, and if that is the case, um, our next meeting is, what's the date?
It is, well, we've, we've moved one. It is two weeks from tonight. It is August, is it 30th, 31st? And then we will be back on our normal schedule, uh, starting, you know, the 31st, September 14th to 28th. And two per month after that.
Great. And I do want to add to folks who are on the call, because I know we often get questions about, when are we going to start doing the board meetings in person? Um, and, uh, we've certainly been discussing that, but we also recognize the limited number of people who would actually be able to physically participate because once you add in all of us, plus the staff who need to be there, you're probably, you know, maybe there are 10 people, you know, 10 community members that would actually be able to get in before, you know, 10 or 20 before we would reach our 50 cap. So, um, I know Dana's working on that and figuring that out and how do we, um, how are we able to do? Because what we don't want is for there to be, um, you know, a long line and we can only let in a few people.
Right.
Um, okay. Well, with that, um, I will call the meeting. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay. The ayes have it. Meeting adjourned at 6:21 PM. See you all on the first day of school next week.
Looking forward to it. Have a great week, everyone. We'll send out more information, not only to our staff, but community and the board as well over this week. And we'll get started next Monday.
Awesome. Thank you.
Have a great night.